I'd like to call the August 19th, 2025 regular city council meeting to order. Let the record reflect that all council members minus the mayor are present tonight. Votes this evening will be recorded using the city's electronic voting system. Madam Clerk, have we received any requests to speak during closed session?
We have not at this moment.
Okay, at this time, the city council recessed to closed session for the purposes of conducting regular city business. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the August 19th, 2025 regular city council meeting to order. Let the record reflect that all council members are present tonight. Voting will be through our recorded electronic voting system. Closed session. Madam Clerk, have we had any requests to speak on closed session comments?
We have not, Mayor.
Okay, then at this time, we'll have the city council convene for the public matters. Here, Madam, somewhere here, do we have anything to report out from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. There is no action report this evening.
Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to public session. At this time, the city council convened to consider public matters. If you wish to speak, please fill out the blue speaker cards in the back of the building and provide to the city clerk. If you wish to submit any writ materials, please provide those to the city clerk also. They will be distributed to the city council. As required by law, when speaking on an item listed on the agenda, limit your comments to subject on the item. If you wish to speak on a subject not listed on the agenda, you may speak under the public comments portion of the meeting. Finally, address your comments to us, the city council. Staff will respond to questions only from the city council, not from the public speakers. At this time, we're gonna have Sheriff Chaplain Fosberg come up and lead us in invocation for our great city and our nation.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight with grateful hearts for the privilege of gathering freely to serve our community. We thank you for the blessings of peace, safety, and the opportunity to work together for the common good. Bless those who live, work, and visit our community. We thank you for these council members and all who work for this city. Grant wisdom and clarity to each council member as they discuss and decide the matters before them. We are encouraged not to grow weary in doing good, for at the proper time, we will reap a harvest if we do not give up. May this promise renew our spirits and inspire us to remain faithful in service to one another and to the community that we love. Guide our steps so that the work done tonight will leave a legacy of hope and blessing for generations to come. We ask this humility and with humility and gratitude. Amen.
That was wonderful. Thank you, Chaplain. Pledge of Allegiance tonight will be led by Brownie Troop 2519. Come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the greatest symbol of freedom in the world.
Please stand up and put your right hand over your heart. Take hats and hoods off your heads.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, by liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, girls. You want to come up and get a picture with us? So, obviously... Thank you, girls, for coming and saying a pledge of allegiance. We have our honorary mayor here with her hat on, so thank you so much for being here, girls, and we appreciate you. Well, thank you, girls. Remember us during cookie season, okay? We like the cookies. Madam City Manager, do we have any reportable items? No. Okay. Okay, presentations, item number two through four. Do we have any requests to speak for our presentations?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay, so I'm gonna bring up presentations two through four. I'm looking for a motion and a second.
Move item two, three, four.
Okay.
I'll second.
Please cast your votes.
And that motion passes unanimously?
Madam City Clerk, please read the title for item number two.
Yes, Mayor. The title of item number two is "Recognition of 2025 Fourth of July Parade Volunteers: Special Groups, Sponsors, and Award Winners."
Good evening, Mayor Voits and members of the council. Tonight, we are here to recognize the hard-working individuals that made the 32nd Annual Fourth of July Parade such a great success. This year's theme was "Lake Forest Thrives in 2025." First, I would like to recognize the amazing parade committee that worked so hard throughout the year to provide the Lake Forest community with a quality and exciting annual Fourth of July parade. There are 27 committee members, and some representatives are here to receive their certificates tonight. I'm gonna call your names. Please wait until all the names have been called to come up and take a photo with the council, as with every other group as well. Parade committee volunteers that are here tonight, Brandon DeRosa, Marty and Robbie Dutchman, Loretta Heron, Cheryl Kampfner, Margie Lancaster, Tibby Montgomery, Doris Neal, Becky Sanchez, and Jennifer Ziv. You may come up and take a photo with the council. I do have a wheelchair coming through.
Loretta, thank you. Come on over to the side here.
Thank you.
We're gonna split it up. Thank you so much. So, the fact is...
No.
What we like to say is thank you. You know, when we all come together and meet at El Toro High School, all the hard work's already done. And so, we want to thank the parade committee for all the hard work and diligence that you guys do in helping us put together one fabulous parade here again in Lake Forest, celebrating our birthday, Fourth of July. So, we want to say thank you so much. And so, on behalf of the city of Lake Forest, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You know, we as council members get there about 8:30, and everybody's already there, but the work behind the scenes are these people right here. So, we have a lot of dedicated Lake Forest residents that do so much to help make the parade happen. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. And if I could have the council stay, then I'll continue with the rest of the recognition of the list. I would also like to acknowledge the hard work in the early hours from the Orange County Sheriff's Department with Deputy Devin Bachmann leading the team, along with the Stars and the Explorers, who did an amazing job securing the streets, and a special thanks to Justin Kirk and PV Maintenance, who were outstanding with the coordination of street closures and the prompt neighborhood cleanup to reopen the streets in a timely manner. We also appreciate the service provided by Falk Ambulance to be there on standby and ready at a moment's notice. And if I can have those groups come up as well and take a photo with the council.
We might be able to get them. Can we get some of the guys over here to take a knee? Come on, guys, over here.
Yeah, I'm like knees.
The hard work that the guys in Orange do, clean our streets afterwards, but the early morning hours, closing the streets and then reopening them in a timely manner. We've got all our Stars, our Explorers, all doing the closing of the streets and standing guard to make sure that we don't have any thorough traffic coming through. So, on behalf of the city of Lake Forest, we are thankful to you all.
Thank you.
Thank you again, guys. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
And on behalf of the city, I would like to thank our sponsors that make such a difference for this large event. Triton Air and Plumbing, RC's Watering Hole, CRNR, Eagle Community Credit Union, Chick-fil-A El Toro and Foothill Ranch, Row House Foothill Ranch, Fulbright Montessori, Humana Healthcare, Pristine Plumbing, Sunset Safety Agency, and Olson Plumbing. And if you're here also, if you'd like to take a photo with the council.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you for sponsoring. We really couldn't have done it without you. So, we like that you guys are involved and make Lake Forest a priority. It's nice to have businesses and groups that actually are willing to give back to the community, and you guys all have done that. So, thank you guys so much. And they said it was a lot of fun.
Last group. The reason why we're all here is to recognize the parade winners. We have a short video to watch. If you guys would like to turn around, that would be great as well. And for the rest of us, here are the parade winners. Best of Community Outreach, Santiago de Compostela. Best of Lake Forest, Saddleback Area Historical Society Molten Museum. Best Novelty, Team Taiwan. The Heroes Award, the Orange County Sheriff's Department Color Guard. The John Irish and Sandy Mink Legacy Award goes to the Pediatric Cancer Research Foundation. Our Most Patriotic, The Ripple Effect. Most Spirited, Saddleback Church. The People's Choice Award, PKSA Karate OC. And our Mayor's Award, the Royal Blue Regiment. And this is our last photo with our council. Please come up.
You know, our Lake Forest Parade is known throughout the county as a community parade. And the fact is that our community comes out strongly for it, as we can see by all those that participated and won awards. But not only that, the people that line the streets to see this every year. So, it's a very special place to have all this go on in our city, rock and roll.
Try to squeeze in, because we're gonna try to take one photo. We're gonna have to really squeeze in. We might have to make two rows if you can. Keep, yeah, try to squeeze in if we need to make another row.
Did you see everybody?
Okay, everybody face front. Okay, everybody face front. Okay? Great, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. A round of applause for our winner. Let's hear it again, one more time for our parade winners. You know, this is a big event for the City of Lake Forest. And we're so blessed to have so many committed people to come forth and participate with us. We're just really a blessed. So, Madam Seag... Madam Seag, Clerk, please read the title for item number three.
Yes, Mayor, the title of item number three is the recognition of Orange County Sheriff's Department Crime Prevention Specialist.
Mayor, I would like to invite Captain Pults down to the podium to give a presentation recognizing our former Crime Prevention Specialist.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Today, we're here to honor a member of our Lake Forest team who's been here for the past seven years, Brittany Oldham. As our Community Services Specialist, she's been the driving force behind many of our programs, including Neighborhood Watch, Business Watch, and of course, our National Night Out that brings together our community year after year. Besides the work and the programs that she did, what truly set her apart was her attitude. She was everyone's friend, she was approachable, she was dependable, and she always carried with her a positive attitude that lifted up everyone around her. So, we're very sad to see her go, but we're very proud of her. She's promoted to Staff Specialist. She's being transferred to the City of San Clemente. They're getting a trusted professional and someone who truly cares about the people and the community. So, congratulations, Brittany.
Congratulations, Brittany. Could we have you come up and get a picture? Thank you so much. And I presume every year when we have the National Night... The helicopter is part of your duty, right? Get them there. So, the helicopter's in high demand throughout the county of Orange. And so, we had someone that had connections that was able every year to get it. So, thank you so much, Brittany. So, Brittany, on behalf of the City of Lake Forest, we want to say thank you. We have a load of gratitude for you, that what you've done in our Neighborhood Watch, our Business Watch, getting probably one of the best National Nights out. It's a busy night for every... Every city in Lake Forest celebrates National Night Out. And we always got the helicopter, the mounted team, and SWAT team. We always had everything. So, that's all because of you. Thank you so much. And I think that my mayor, Pro Tem, being a former law enforcement, he'd like to say a few words.
I do. Thank you, Mayor. So, I first met Brittany in 1996 when I was a deputy, transferred from Lake Forest over to Laguna Woods, Laguna Hills. And Brittany was always a professional. And what I want to tell the City of San Clemente is, you just got better. Brittany's a great, great worker, and I thank you for everything you've done. And I see your beautiful families there. I recognize, like, they look familiar from all those pictures you had. But what threw me off was Hudson's hair. It's not really that color. So, but no, thank you for all the hard work you did, and great job.
Lake Forest, I don't know if we should congratulate her, because I'm very partial to Lake Forest to be the best city in the county of Orange. So, we wish San Clemente a much success, because they get a very successful person involved. Okay, that brings us to item number four. Madam City Clerk, please read item number.
Title of item number four is National Emergency Management Awareness Month.
Good evening, Mayor Voits and council members. August is National Emergency Management Awareness Month. Why does awareness matter? Emergencies can happen at any time, any and anywhere. There are two kinds of disasters, man-made and natural. Examples of natural disasters are earthquakes, fires, tropical storms, and tsunamis. Man-made disasters could be power outages, hazardous waste spills, cyber attacks, terrorism, and even civil unrest. Having awareness helps communities to recover and rebuild. It's an opportunity to educate, plan, and prepare. What is emergency management? Emergency management is planning in advance, coordinating under pressure, and developing lasting resilience. The basic core functions of emergency management are preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation. What is the role of the city's emergency manager? The emergency manager provides training and resources for employees, residents, and the community. Weather conditions and other events that may impact the city are continuously monitored. This past year, all full-time Lake Forest employees completed over 2,040 hours of FEMA training. Several employees and CERT members have completed the American Red Cross Basic Shelter Training and are certified in shelter management. In addition, staff will complete communications training over the next couple days using the 800 megahertz radios purchased by the city earlier this year. These radios will provide an additional means of communication between staff when cell phones are unavailable. The city has developed several emergency plans in preparing for emergencies. The Emergency Operations Plan provides guidelines to follow and act when emergencies happen. The Threat and Hazard Identification and Risk Assessment Plan is a systematic approach to identify and evaluate risks posed by various threats and hazards in the community. The Local Hazard Mitigation Plan is a local plan designed to reduce and/or eliminate risk to people and property from natural and man-made hazards. The Continuity of Operations Plan is a strategic framework that ensures an organization can continue its essential functions during and after a significant disruption or emergency. In addition to these plans, the role of the emergency manager is to develop and build relationships while maintaining partnerships. These partners include: Orange County Sheriff's Department, Orange County Fire Authority, the Red Cross, and neighboring jurisdictions and their emergency managers. The city entered into a memorandum of understanding with the cities of Mission Viejo, Laguna Hills, Laguna Niguel, and Aliso Viejo to provide coverage for emergency managers when needed. All the agencies listed on this slide are a few of the partners that Lake Forest works with, and there are many, many more. As residents, you can develop your own emergency awareness plan by getting involved with the Lake Forest Community Emergency Response Team, which classes start on September 8th, or become a volunteer with the Red Cross or Orange County Fire Watch. You can pack your go-bag for the home, office, and even your vehicle. Prepare your family by creating your own communication plan and build your own home emergency kit. For more information, here are a few available resources. Thank you, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much. You know, Lake Forest, we have a search program where we ask our neighbors to get involved with Certified Emergency Response Team. But the fact, it all starts here in Lake Forest, in the training that we have as staff members and those that are going to be watching over us in the event of a disaster. We live right here next to the foothills, where we have fires come periodically through the canyon to the back fences of our backyards here in Lake Forest. The earthquake is especially eventually going to, they say it's going to hit. So, the fact is, but we're a city that's prepared. And so, we thank you, thank you so much for your involvement, and appreciate that. Thank you, staff. If you'd like to make a public comment, this is your time. Please fill out a blue speaker card, give it to the city clerk, and your name will be called. Comments, we live into three minutes per person. The council and staff will not respond to questions or comments during the public comment period. If you leave your contact information, staff will contact you to address issues raised during your comment. When you are called to speak, come to the podium. Your three minutes will begin when the green light is on. The green light will remain on for two minutes. When the light changes from green to yellow, speakers will have one minute left to conclude their comments. When the light changes from yellow to red, please conclude your comments and return to your seat. A timer will not be displayed on the screen. Madam City Clerk, have we had any requests to speak?
We do, Mayor. We have 10 general public comment. And our first public commenter is Michael Davison.
Liberty and justice for all. We just recited these words, but do we really believe them? And do we truly stand behind them? At the last city council meeting, I voiced concerns about our federal agents conducting illegal arrests in our cities. These are masked unidentified people operating without warrants, operating in our cities with impunity and backed by federal government. Is this liberty and justice for all? My daughter teaches middle school math in Yorba Linda. As a school starts, as a school year starts, so do the lockdown drills. She wrote the following to my wife and me: Each year, I dread lockdown drill days when I have to tell 38 wide-eyed 11-year-olds to go for the eyes and groin if I get incapacitated and can't protect them, to look around the room and identify which objects would be the best weapons, to leave their injured friends and save themselves, to ignore fire alarms, to avoid the field where we go for fire drills, and instead to scavenge into the neighborhood and we'll find them later, all while knowing that my classroom only has one door, and we'd be fish in a barrel should the worst ever happen. And this year, lockdown drills now include practicing protection from ice raids. That's right, besides worrying about shooters, our kids and teachers must now train to lockdown schools to minimize kidnapping by our own government. Is this the liberty and justice we pledged? No. As a city, we have limited jurisdiction against federal operations, even illegal ones. We contract with OCSD, but Lake Forest has no say in their policies, and they can't intervene with federal agents, even when their actions have no legal basis. We must therefore support our teachers and citizens with their rapid-response groups. We must work with Orange County to minimize OCSD's collusion with DHS. And we must unite with the state and other municipalities in lawsuits demanding our laws be respected. And we must make our voices heard through letters, peaceful protests, and votes. If we truly believe in liberty and justice for all, we must fight for it with every tool available. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Drish Rao.
Good evening, council members. Very good evening.
Good evening.
I was here March 18th of this year and came to speak about the same problem that I have, or we all have, at the Lake Forest Sports Park with EV bikers. It's become from bad to worse now. The problem is now they are really coming on to people who walk around the place. They use a lot of bad language when we tell them to slow down. "F your mother," "F your wife," you know. And when we tell them we're going to call the cops on them, they say same thing to the cops, about the cops. And when we try to take a photograph of them, they start shouting, "Pedophile here, pedophile here," you know. And they start going around us, and they really create a problem. We just have such a lot of problems with these guys. And this group is about 10 to 15 small kids, really young kids, less than 15 years old. And they go around the whole park. And whoever they can harass, they'll harass. And whoever tells them to slow down, they use all sorts of bad language. Does not matter whether it's a man, or a woman, or an old person, they don't care. I need your help, because we are all so scared. We cannot even take a photograph of these guys. So, can somebody, I mean, cops come there and, you know, come in their vehicles, these guys move to the other side. They all have phones and say, "Oh, cops are here, go on the other side." And they go round and round, creating problems. They are doing all sorts of wheelies into people walking there, especially a lot of older people, and they tell them to "F off the way." And even if you tell them anything else, they just gang up on you, behind you, they taunt. They come behind you on their bikes, lift their bikes into you, into you like that. And then, the other thing that they do is they break all the latches in all the bathrooms. In all the bathrooms, they break all the latches. The minute a new latch is put, they break it. They ram into the door, and they break the latches, they destroy the things there. And when I tell them that they should not go on the field, this new field that we put for, the soccer field there, they just do wheelies there and just spoil the whole field there. So, we need somebody there, not in a uniform, maybe somebody who comes there and checks on these guys. I report this to the office every time. And those guys come running around, you know, on their small vehicles to check on these guys. These guys pedal and get out of the park, or the sports park. So, what can I do? What can we do together to spoil, stop these guys? There are two, three places that they come. One guy comes and checks the whole place and says, "Hey, it's all clear, let's come in." And they ride really hard, really fast. Especially on Rancho, they do 60, 70 miles an hour.
Well, your time is concluded. See the gentleman in the back of the room there? Go talk to him about best practices. We're trying to get that under there, so you can be a conduit for us. And so, go talk to him, because we want that reported still. So, the pictures and letting them know, maybe we can get a phone number to you as you walk in, you can call the front desk. And so, you can call them, no, without you. Go back to the gentleman back there, Captain Pults.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
Our next speaker is Marcel Louis XIV.
Marcel Louis XIV, 26 years in Foothill Ranch. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. A few meetings back, I made an inquiry, the Fire March's new fire hazard map. And you said, "Had nothing to do with you, go talk to OCFA." So, I did some research. First, I think we can agree that Councilmember Mark Tenma is appointed to the OCFA Board of Directors, and that the council member in his capacity is representing the city of Foothill Ranch. I'm sorry, Lake Forest, excuse me. Constitution of the State of California, Article 1, Declaration of Rights, Section 3, Part B, Part 1. The people have the right of access to information concerning the conduct of the people's business and their... And therefore, the meetings of public bodies and the writings of public officials and agencies are open to public scrutiny. OCFA document that was passed and approved and adopted 22nd of September 2022 and signed by Michelle Stegler, the Chairboard of Directors, the document states the following: When a city council member also serves as a board member of the Orange County Fire Authority, transparency of their activities can be a concern for the residents. Transparency and accountability. As elected officials and appointees to a public board, the city council members are expected to be transparent, accountable to their constituents. This includes reporting on activities and decisions made in their role of an OCFA board member. In addition, if you are concerned about the lack of reporting or transparency from your city council member serving on the OCFA board, consider taking these steps. steps. One such example of a step is contact your city council, reach out to the city council member directly, and inquire about their involvement and reporting on the OCFA board meetings. So actually, it would appear that my inquiry was valid, and that based on the information available on such matters. Mr. Mayor, before I go, before you say, you know, I can go to the OCFA website and download the information, we have council members attending external meetings, so we do not have to. It is a responsibility of each council member assigned to external memberships to inform the city residents of any relevant data. So in closing, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to quote you on this, I suggest you go back to your office, sharpen your pencil, and try again. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Jay Cost.
Respectfully, council, thank you for your time and your consideration. The last time I addressed this council, I asked you to do the right thing and stand against domestic terrorism of any kind, including the kind ICE is doing under the Trump administration by having masked unidentified persons using unmarked vehicles to violently attack and abduct people off the street. Remember, terrorism is defined as the use of violence or the threat of violence, often against civilians, to instill fear and achieve political or ideological goals. What I'm asking for, I don't think is difficult for you to do, which is for you to pass a simple resolution that calls for all law enforcement working within the city of Lake Forest, including those acting on behalf of ICE, to one, wear identification, and two, forbid masking, except as specified under California law, of course. In the absence of this, our residents do not know if they are being attacked by vigilantes, rapists, law enforcement wannabes, or legitimate law enforcement officers. And thus, any reasonable person in today's climate is left wondering if they should cooperate or resist by fleeing or fighting. We've been seeing examples of this in the news. I have, you have, excuse me, you have to understand that not everyone enjoys the sense of freedom and security. Many people have had experiences where they have been abused and physically attacked. I know some of these people. And as members of the city council, you represent them too and might try to understand their insecurity. People are now wondering if they can count on law enforcement to protect them when called upon. If our city council, you showed that you have the back of the residents, like other city councils have done lately, and if the Orange County Sheriff's Department practices the protect and serve motto for all people, more of our residents might feel a little more of that sense of freedom and security that you now feel. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Sean Fletcher.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and community members. I am Sean Fletcher, a twenty-three-year resident. I am here tonight to urge you to prohibit the use of Class II e-bikes in our city parks and to restrict their use to students sixteen years and older. As a community member and a member of the volunteers in parks, I have personally witnessed how these e-bikes have been used to be destructive to city property. A few examples. At Tamarisk Park, e-bike riders doing donuts on the turf, kicking up sod and creating holes in the sports fields. Just last night, I chased off a few teens driving recklessly through the recently updated baseball fields, creating gouges in the clay sand infield substrate. They were also using the raised pitching mound as a ramp. As a reminder, the city and Lake Forest Little League put in a significant investment to update that field. At the sports park, other than e-bikes zipping at full speed along the pedestrian walkway and sidewalks, I had to call the main office because e-bike riders were damaging freshly renovated turf fields by driving through overwatered area just to kick up a muddy mess. At Rimgate, the sports court is crisscrossed with skid marks that take up the court from one side to the other. Our city parks are meant to be safe, family-friendly environments where children play, seniors walk, and joggers, dog walkers, and cyclists all share the same paths. Allowing high-speed motorized bikes in these areas greatly increases the risk of collisions and serious injuries. Unlike traditional bikes, these e-bikes can accelerate quickly and are difficult to control in a crowded, narrow, mixed-use area. Furthermore, setting a minimum age of sixteen is not about restricting recreation, it's about responsibility. Operating a throttle-powered bike requires judgment, spatial awareness, and respect for others. Younger riders, especially middle-school-age students and younger, often lack the maturity to safely operate these vehicles, particularly in unpredictable park environments. An eighty-pound child on a throttle-driven bike moving twenty-four, twenty miles an hour is just not a rider, it's a potential danger to everyone else enjoying the park. By restricting Class II e-bikes to parks and setting the age limit at sixteen, we are not eliminating access to healthy, sustainable recreation. Instead, we are protecting the safety of pedestrians, ensuring fair use of public spaces, and helping young riders develop the maturity needed before taking on the responsibility of a motorized bike. State Assemblywoman Diane Dixon recently introduced AB seventeen seventy-three to give local governments in Orange County more control over e-bike regulation. I urge the city council to put community safety first and support these measures. Thank you for your time and leadership.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next public commenter is Brian McMillan.
Good evening. Thank you once again for your service. Also, congratulations are in order for putting another healthcare business out of business. Very good. Hypnotic wellness is now gone. They're left with the continuing rent that they signed up for, for a number of years. The landlord is stuck, needs to find another tenant. And almost every time the Lake Forest, a Lake Forest official comments about personal services businesses, they demonstrate a continuing policy of intentionally ignoring illegal actions by code enforcement, the planning commission, and now the city council itself. Mayor Protem Pecano, you intentionally slandered hypnotic wellness, their clients, and even your colleague, Councilman Hugh, by claiming that Asian-run healthcare services attract unsavory people. I guess in that group of unsavory people would be Councilman Hugh. When Councilman Hugh, or you, sorry, and other Asians immigrated to the U.S., they brought with them a culture that embraces herbal and holistic healing. This council's racist policies are on display for all to see. Just because they don't look like you and maybe choose alternative health techniques than you do, doesn't mean they attract people of bad character. Orange County OCSD is responsible for, for preventing criminal activity, but they're just not interested in enforcing prostitution laws. I don't like coin laundromats because they attract vagrants. But do I ask you to remove all coin laundromats from the city? Of course not. I don't like Home Depot because they attract immigrant workers who are uninsured and you have no idea of their backgrounds. Do I ask you to put Home Depot out of business? Don't think so. I don't like liquor stores because people buy liquor at liquor stores, they get in their cars, and they run over people. I don't like a lot of kinds of businesses, but am I asking you to put them out of business? Please, please, please stop this assault on Lake Forest businesses that you don't happen to like. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next public commenter is Christine Clark.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. From last meeting, you know, we live in the condos off Malabar where a public street has been turned into a private road for an HOA. Not only that, not only that, this HOA seems to control free spaces where they don't even have homes. At the traffic and parking meeting, a man from the HOA asks you to close your eyes and imagine being in bed at nine and having to hear a chirp from a setting a car alarm because people are leapfrogging parking cars. I have to ask, does this person not know he lives in a city? Does he not know that other people also live there too? This person asks you to remove this small pace, piece of public street where people can park. Again, there are no houses, but he doesn't want the space opened up at the bottom of the hill. Where are the homes, where there are also no homes? Why does this HOA have so much control? We lived in Winrose prior. Every time there was a concert in the park, our street was packed. We didn't get a private parking. Why is that? Why, why is it so special about this group of people that the city of twenty years has allowed them to control a street? Do they pay all the maintenance on it? Do they pay for the repairs? We were told that they simply desired an open space and no parking. Well, we desire not to have to walk a half mile in the heat to get to our vehicles. If they want a private street so badly, there are new gated communities being built all around us. Now, the one good thing out of this with going public, the vandalism on the cars that we have have stopped. We understand it was spoken about it at their meeting. We have also been told by many in the community, this has been going on a long time and it was accepted. After the last meeting, we told parking enforcement that the vehicles on this section of the street are never ticketed. When they leave their cars sitting there for weeks, yet we always get ticketed. We were told this is officer discretion, they mispronounce discrimination, why do we get ticketed, and the city does not enforce the same laws on them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Mark Hermanson.
Good evening, council. I'd like to address some comments made by our city manager at the last meeting. We were told the residents of Malabar were given private parking because their workers had nowhere to park and they desired a nice open space in front of where they live. Well, we desire a lot of things too, and this is a great first-world problem for them to have. The residents of Bella Palermo, I really believe would probably desire not to have their view disturbed by houses, yet we're going to continue to build them. They probably desired not to have the foundations cracked on their homes, which, by the way, the city and the contractor declined to pay for because they're digging in the dirt around there. But that seems to be okay. I spoke to Mr. Tran and he explained how we were given options. One was to add parking on one of our main streets. The Fire Marshal said no to this. Now, I understand he wants to run off numbers. I'm a former paramedic who drove L-ten-eleven ambulances, to include pulling people out of the rubble in San Francisco for two weeks. You do not want to add more parking there and have a hard time getting one of those ambulances out. He also said we could dig into the hill. Is the city going to be willing to step up and pay the insurance for any of those houses that are damaged? Because that is going to be happening when that fill is cut open. Mr. Tran also told me he was not interested in looking at overflow parking until we make changes, like using our garages. Great, let's take a tour of Malabar and see those elaborate workout rooms, the big wood shops and everything else that are in there. Now, is this attitude only for the condos or are we going to have that same attitude for the people on Malabar? Or again, is it for the second-class condo citizens? He seems to forget that one is a private road and one is a gated community. One pays for itself, one is for the public. Now, we have met many decent people on this road, but we've also suffered property damage. We've had some very nasty comments thrown at my wife and I. We've had some pseudo-threats to us. And I will say this, I spent eight years jumping out of airplanes for this country. I will not let a bunch of people that want to FA and FO speak to my wife that way without me responding. Now, I hate to act that way, but I will not let her be disrespected. We were told parking a half mile up the hill was a compromise. Speaking to people who lived there for twenty-five years, it was shoved down our throats. And now they want to even take that away. Mr. Tran seemed very proud of his in-house parking enforcement, yet we've reported the parking violations and documented them for over a year for the residents on Malabar. We're currently getting ready to file a CPRA to find out if there is discrimination in whether we get ticketed and they don't. And that will actually bring up a different conversation with the parking enforcement in Lake Forest. All we're asking for is let's just do the right thing, open up the parking, and let's have equity.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
Our next speaker is Nita Desai.
Good evening. Thank you all for all your help you guys do. I'm not here to complain. I'm trying to figure out what's the best way to do it. I've lived in the Portola Hills for thirty-five years. I've seen the roads being redone. My main concerns are, of course, number one is the e-bikes. Number two is the Saddleback Ranch Road speed. Kids, drivers, they go so fast. There is a sign that's put in, I think after talking to a lot of people, but that one's not in the right spot. You need another sign ahead of that between Fawnridge and Malabar to put a sign saying, "Slow down," because all these new cars and the kids and people with the new cars, they drive so fast, somebody's going to get hurt so bad. And I also request that they put a sign right near the school, the Portola Elementary School, with a red light saying, "No right on red." Somebody's going to get hurt so badly. People cross that area without checking the car coming in or anything. And I drive that every single day, many times a day, and I don't want to hurt anybody either. Another request I have is the speed signs. There's one on Cedar Ridge, you can't see it. One on Jasper Hill, you can't see it. You cannot see these signs when the little e-bikers are going so with such a large, high speed. Somebody's going to get hurt. There's cars come and go over there. My request is just to make it a little safer. Another one I have is the e-bikes, of course. They're driving all over the place in the regular business area. Our area is a hilly area, and they come down so fast and the one car gets it, that's it. It's going to be so bad. I'm here to help and request. I appreciate you all for doing your work and thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
And our last speaker is April Josephson.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Thank you for caring for Lake Forest animals. As the Executive Director of the Pet Adoption Center of Orange County, I want to bring awareness to ongoing issues with the city's animal control and shelter provider, OC Animal Care, and request that the city of Lake Forest start formal discussions with Mission Viejo Animal Services to take over as their animal services provider effective when the city's current animal services contract is up in May 2026. As a Rancho Santa Margarita resident, I receive superior services provided by Mission Viejo, whereas at the PAC OC, I deal with OCAC pushing off as many services as possible to others, including us. The RSM City Council and staff are very happy with Mission Viejo. At the PAC OC, I am working with Mission Viejo on an October adoption event. MVAS collaborates, OCAC does not. Wildlife services and dead animal pickup are big problems in OCAC areas. My brother, who lives in Lake Forest, recently disposed of a dead duck left on a neighbor's lawn by a coyote. Yesterday, I received a message about a cat that was found just deceased in Lake Forest. As of today, it was not picked up. Yesterday, OCAC told the resident to dispose of it herself. Today, she was told to hire a private company to dispose of it. It was not her cat. OCAC generally has three field officers on duty covering the entire county, while Mission Viejo has two to three for five cities. A few weeks ago, I received a call about a duck tangled in fishing line at Veterans Park that was reported to OCAC. They refused the call. Mission Viejo goes out to the RSM lake regularly to handle similar calls. There was a recent article in the LA Times regarding the lack of wildlife services at OCAC and the refusal to renegotiate. OCAC and the refusal to renegotiate a contract for services with Wetlands and Wildlife Center in Huntington Beach. Mission Viejo Animal Services is certified for wildlife. Another article appeared in Voice of OC about the unnecessary careless deaths of two French Bulldogs with breathing problems. OCAC vets approved the dogs to be transported to Idaho by OCAC staff through the desert rather than being made available for adoption locally. A few days ago, the OC Register reported on cruelty charges against Wolfie Acres, where neglect caused many to be euthanized. OCAC sent 149 dogs to them, two from Lake Forest. Last Monday, I went to go rescue dogs at OCAC. I had to make an appointment with staff on Monday for Wednesday, because their buildings are not open to the public. I can see dogs anytime I want at any other shelter. In May, I mailed our kennel license renewal to OCAC. Our license expired in June. I have still not received my renewal in the mail. Last year, it took that long as well. I will be providing more detail in writing regarding the numerous problems with OCAC. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you for what you do to the animals.
That's it for our public commenters, Mayor.
Well, that brings us to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the city's consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council or staff request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Have there been any requests to remove from the consent calendar?
There have been none, Mayor.
Counsel? I entertain a motion, and I actually have a public statement before we go. There are warrants in the register for the County of Orange. I'm an employee of the County of Orange, but I do not work for the departments that generate the warrants, because the County of Orange is a public agency, because I do not work for the departments in question. I have determined I have noninterest in these warrants, and I will be voting on the item. Motion and a second plea.
I'll move items five to 15.
I'll second that.
Please cast your votes.
And that motion passes unanimously.
That brings us to discussion items, action items. Items numbers 16 through 18. Madam City Clerk, please read the title for item 16.
Yes, the title of item number 16 is "An Urgency Ordinance Establishing a Temporary Moratorium on Massage Establishments."
Madam City Manager, please introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have a presentation by our Community Development Director, Gail Ackerman.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Under the California Constitution, the city is charged with the responsibility for the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens. Pursuant to this authority, the city has adopted a framework for the regulation of massage uses. This use requires approval of a use permit by the Planning Commission, followed by a background check of the applicant, and the issuance of a massage license. Chapter 5 of the city's municipal code sets forth a series of operational requirements that must be met by the business at all times. Each massage establishment license is subject to annual renewal and inspection. This slide illustrates the fluctuation in the number of massage licenses in the city from 2007 to the present time. In 2007, the council enacted a moratorium on this use, and after study, adopted new regulations in 2008. At that time, there were 18 massage businesses in the city. Shortly thereafter, state legislation was passed that preempted all cities from regulating massage uses and creating uniform statewide regulations. During this period, the city saw a dramatic increase in the number of massage establishments, with 35 such businesses in 2015. By 2019, the number had increased to 42. The city again amended the massage regulations, strengthening the license renewal and revocation procedures. As can be seen on the chart, the number of licenses dropped to a low of 16, and today the city has 18 massage establishment licenses. This graphic illustrates the location of existing massage establishments in the city. The Orange County Sheriff's Department has been investigating massage establishments and similar businesses since 2022. According to reports, they have found that massage therapists and other employees have attempted to engage in illicit sexual activity. Based on these reports, the city has denied massage business annual renewals, issued administrative and police citations, and revoked the use permit of one business. It's important to note that massage and illicit sexual activity has also been found in personal care businesses that have private treatment rooms. Such businesses may be called a day spa or a wellness center, and they are not covered by the city's massage regulations and do not require a city license. This graphic depicts the locations of 27 known personal care businesses in Lake Forest. The city has incurred notable expenses enforcing massage regulations, and this includes time spent by our code enforcement officers, time for law enforcement undercover activities, as well as administrative and legal review. These uses pose an immediate and significant threat to public health, safety, and welfare, as there is the potential for injury or abuse of the patrons that may be solicited, and an increased opportunity for prostitution and human trafficking. Staff is recommending the adoption of an interim urgency ordinance, which is expressly allowed in the government code in order to protect public health, safety, and welfare. The initial moratorium would be in effect for 45 days, during which time no use permit or building permit for a new massage establishment could be issued. During the initial 45-day period, staff would review pertinent codes, evaluate inspection protocols, consult with other agencies, including Orange County Sheriff's Department, and consider ways to regulate personal care businesses. The government code allows for the moratorium to be extended twice for a maximum duration of two years, to allow sufficient time to study options and to develop and adopt revised regulations. This work effort is included in the city's strategic plan. Staff recommends that the city council establish a temporary moratorium on massage establishments pending study and the preparation of an update to the city's municipal code and zoning ordinance. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you for your presentation. Madam City Clerk, do we have a request to speak?
We do have one public commenter, and that is Brian McMillan.
There's an old saying: If you find yourself in a hole, stop digging. And that's exactly what you guys are doing tonight. You're digging yourselves a hole, a legal hole, the size of this stage. This is absolutely incredible. It has taken six months to put one applicant out of business while it bounced around in the Planning Commission, and then finally you guys decided to get involved, and it delayed it another month. In the meantime, they're out of business now. Congratulations. You're proving that you are, and this is important, a driving force for the illegal activity that this city is doing right now. This, what's the urgency here? I mean, if it takes six months to get a permit, why do you need a, why the urgency? I mean, it's been determined that you just do not want healthcare businesses here. A couple of the Planning Commissioners said that day spas lead to illegal massage, and illegal massage, more often than not, and I'm quoting the last year's Planning Commission chairman, "more often than not leads to prostitution, which leads to human trafficking." That is the temperament of this city. It is illegal to do this. I hope, I hope you have consulted, staff has consulted your city's attorney. Because, and if you did, and he said this was okay, then you should be looking for another attorney, another city attorney. Okay, enough of that. Keep digging. He's giving you the shovel. Keep digging.
Councilman Yu, I don't have that information. We have a log of current applications that we have that's on the city's website, but I haven't looked at that recently, so I would need to get back with you to see if we have any pending applications.
Sure. Is there any application currently pending?
I would need to consult that list. I'm not, I don't have a memory of every single application that we have.
Okay, so if the council approved this, does it have an effect on the current applications?
I can actually answer that question. So if the council were to approve the moratorium this evening, that would pause any applications for the period of the moratorium. So even if the application was currently pending, that would be paused, and it would not, it would not move forward until the moratorium was, was over and concluded.
Yeah, I remember Deborah mentioned during the last council meeting, when we put up that item there, she said there's only one application. So I guess there's no effect on any of, right?
We would have to confirm. As of that meeting, I don't believe there were any, but we would have to check more recently to let you know.
Thank you.
Councilman Serval?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure I have a clear understanding of what has prompted this action. So if I were to summarize what's going on here, the personal care business, which we don't have regulations on, so we don't have them annually certifying or inspections, but we've received evidence that this activity, the illegal activity, is occurring. Is that correct?
We, we have received reports that there is activity in personal care. You know, our code enforcement does not go in to determine if this type of activity is taking place, so we would need assistance with an undercover investigation.
Do we ever get reports from residents who have gone in for a type of personal care and then resulted in something that was awkward or uncomfortable for them? Do we get those kind of reports?
It is my understanding that's been reported to the Sheriff's Department. They don't typically call code enforcement on that.
Okay. And I want to also ask our city attorney, could you address the legality of this whole issue in terms of Mr. McMillan's point about digging a hole? So I want to make sure I understand from a legal standpoint where we are on this and our consideration of this moratorium.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that's just wrong. The government code actually allows for interim urgency ordinances, which are known colloquially as moratoria. It's allowed actually in two places in the government code. This is a very standard zoning operation, allowing a city to study a specific issue during a specified time period. As noted in Gail's report, we had a moratorium back in 2007. Nearly every city I'm aware of has had at least one, if not several, moratoria to study different types of uses in the city. This is outlined very clearly in the government code, the process by which a moratorium can be put in place, the reports that have to come back to the council, the way that things are studied, and so forth. This is, again, provided for expressly by the government code. It's a standard operation by every city that I'm aware of.
So during this initial 45-day period, when we pause applications and we start looking at, all right, personal care businesses, are we planning to conduct investigations? We're looking at whether or not we need to institute an ordinance for personal care businesses? Is, is that kind of the routine that we're going to go through here?
That's exactly right. So during this first 45-day period, staff, myself, code enforcement, working with police, will look at what we've seen to date. And by the way, there have been a number of instances of prostitution. There have been offers of illegal massage at these personal care businesses. This is, the last about 18 months have seen an uptick in these illegal activities, in massage establishments and non-massage establishments, up to and including prostitution. So that's been very clearly established. But this would be studied, including ways to regulate this. We would look at what other jurisdictions have done, what we could do, and then the requirement under the government code is that we come back to the council within that 45-day period and report on our findings. And if the council is satisfied with the study that has been undertaken, the moratorium would end. If additional time is needed, then there's allowance for a second extension, or a first extension, I should say, of 10 months and 15 days, which brings that period to one year. But there's, there's a reporting mechanism that's required under the government code. We would come back after 45 days and report.
Thank you. So if our interest here is to restrict, prohibit, catch illegal activity, then we stand on solid legal ground here. Is that accurate?
This is as solid legal ground as you get in the land use context. Again, this is called out expressly in the government code. It's a power given expressly to cities, and it's one that is exercised all the time.
Right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I think that brings me to Mayor Protem Piquino.
Yes, Gail, I got a couple of questions for you. Can you go back to the slide that has the other, like the day spas? But while I'm asking that, in 2019, the city had north of 40 massage establishments in the city. Where were the majority of those at? Do you know? I mean...
No, I don't know.
Would you, well, okay. So, but we had 40, I guess, were they scattered, or were they mostly on the west side of the city?
They were scattered in the commercial areas of the city, so we have kind of clusters of commercial. And yes, there is a lot of commercial and small industrial spaces in the southern part of the city.
Okay, so I, to me, this is kind of interesting that we're talking about this, where the last council meeting we had, we did approve a massage parlor, and I think the quote was, "Everybody's innocent till proven guilty." So with this massage, with this moratorium, now anybody else, we're going to assume that they're guilty until proven innocent, because we don't want to do this at moratorium, correct? I mean, we're basically going to say, hey, nobody else, because, you know, technically, you're all guilty, because last month, when we brought this up for, for the one off of Bridger, we thought, you know, the count, I voted no, but my colleague said, hey, we're going to vote on this, because, you know, there's nothing wrong with massage parlors. But here, the very next meeting, we're having this, this moratorium. Now, with that being said, I agree we need a moratorium, but how in two different meetings, we have different, different takes. But looking at the number of licensed massage establishment, there are 11 on the west side of the city. And if you go across, there's seven across the rest of the city. So I think, and then with these personal care, if you look at the dots there, the west side of the city has a bulk of them, correct?
Yes, on this graphic, yes.
Okay, so, and granted, their personal care is like Massage Envy and whatever, like, what are the different names, if you do you know?
No, it wouldn't be Massage Envy. Obviously, that's a massage establishment. It could be, it could be, I don't know.
A day spa, stuff like that?
Yeah, it could be Eden Glen. It may have spa in the name. It can, we've seen all kinds of different businesses. We even know nail salons often have private, private rooms inside, where they may do facials and other things. So that's part of what we'll be looking at, because I think it's really, these are freestanding that we took from kind of Google and Yelp. But I think as we get more into it, we'll find other businesses that have private rooms within them.
Okay, so back at the last meeting I brought up, in November of 2024, the FBI closed two establishments here, is that correct? They caught, for human trafficking, right? Which... Which, you know, that was part of my thing is like, I don't, I had nothing against the owner of Mystique or Hypnotic or whatever, Hypnotic. It was more of the people coming, looking for that type of action. So with looking at the maps, looking at the one map that has the, the, actually licensed establishments and the known personal care businesses, I, I do think we need to do a moratorium. But I would, you know, I'd like to make the recommendation. No staff has their recommendation, but I recommend that, that we do it from Murelins Boulevard to the five, where the bulk of these are. I mean, across the city, there's, there's, there's not that, I mean, every district doesn't have, every place you look on here doesn't have that many, but the west side or what I call downtown has the most. So I'd like to make the recommendation that, yeah, we go on with this moratorium, but anything west of Murelins Boulevard.
Do you guys have a response to that, or? Okay, well, we're bringing it up to Councilman Tedmer.
Thank you. I, I appreciate my colleague's interest in the district he represents, but I think we should look at the entire city. Obviously, that will include all of District Five.
I didn't say District Five. I said Murelins to the five.
I understand. But I understand you're, you're calling out the focus of the area you represent, so I get that part of it. But I'd rather look at the entire city, because I don't want to omit something. And I certainly don't want to create an unequal field for people that in one area are treated one way and somewhere else, a different way. So I think we need to look at the entire city, and that would incorporate all of the west end or south end of the city. I just want to pick up on one comment you made where we approved, at the previous meeting, we approved all massage establishments. We didn't. We were only discussing one establishment, and we were basing that on the facts presented for that one application. So I, I wouldn't want my record to be characterized as approving all massage establishments, because that was not, that was not on the agenda.
Said the one. But my, 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 the reason I'm bringing this up is he had findings. He had a finding. And my content last council meeting was the compatibility of everything else. People talked about traffic. People talked about something else. But me, the compatibility of that establishment, so close to a park, so close to residents and a neighborhood, that was my issue. Okay, I don't, I mean, massage parlor could go anywhere else in industrial areas, but my issue with that establishment itself was that it was so close. But like I said, to me, it was, okay, let's dump one more in this, in District Five, and then now we'll shut it off for 45 days. And that's the way I felt that this is happening. And like I said, I don't mind that we do a moratorium, but if you look across the city, it's the areas from Murelins down to the five is the, is the areas that are mostly saturated with these, these, these requests. And the city manager said, we don't have any requests that are pending right now, so 45 days goes pretty quick. So that's my motion. If you don't want to, if, you know, if there's a second, that's fine. If there's not, but that's my motion.
Councilman Yu?
Last council meeting was water under the bridge. This one applicant was adjudicated based on a fact.
Well, here's some new water.
The, the new water here is, obviously, we see the high impact to the city because of the personal care and the massage establishment. And I agree with the staff recommendation here. So I will make a motion to approve the staff's recommendation.
So I got a question for you, whoever answers this. So from the last meeting to now, we've seen a high, high number of establishments? Or have they been the same?
They have been the same. Remember, we have a news that two massage was closed, because at least...
But I'm just saying, from last meeting to this meeting, what's the big difference?
It's two different animals here.
No, it's the same animal. We approved a massage parlor, and then 30 days later, we're saying, no more.
We are just not accepting new applicants.
Okay, Councilman Servo.
Thank you, Mayor. So what I understand as the difference between last council meeting and this one is that it seems like the personal care businesses are, with the evidence that we have or the suspicion of this, is that they're trying to circumvent the whole idea of licensing and, and watchdog. And our duty as the city is to protect our residents. If, if we did absolutely nothing and this activity prevailed, then we'd have people screaming, how come you guys aren't doing your job to watchdog this? This is our duty to make sure that we're protecting our residents. If we have evidence that this is occurring, not accusing anybody, but the difference is, last time, we had businesses that are subject to the licensing and the inspections. Personal care businesses is a whole different ballgame for me. I don't see, I see them trying to circumvent this idea with the evidence that we have, and I'm not having any kind of watchdog control over them. So that's my assessment. Does that sound accurate, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, a significant part or impetus for this moratorium is the need to study these uses that currently are not regulated by the code. And, and staff is looking for time to look at how, how we can regulate these, these uses, if we can, if they belong in, in, in a scheme that is, is more similar to the scheme that currently regulates massage uses. But it's just kind of a, it's an unknown area. And as you've said, it appears that there are bad actors who are circumventing our current regulations to perform bad actions, and we need to look at that and figure out how to regulate that.
Yeah, I, you know, like I said, I, I'm for this moratorium, but I wish we would have had this energy last meeting. So that's all I had to say. I wanted to say what was on my chest, so it's off now.
Well, Mayor Protem, I shouldn't have left early last meeting. I missed all this, but I want to say, I, I am, I understand this 45-day moratorium is, is for new applicants. So would, would it establish, those that are established already, would they still be, they be investigated but not closed?
It's a good question. Existing operations are allowed to continue to operate.
So all the ones in that she's got dotted out?
That's correct. They simply couldn't expand with, with any kind of additional permit. But those, those dots may continue to operate pursuant to their licenses.
Okay. You know, obviously, human trafficking, because of the influx of, of immigrants that we had in the last few years, human trafficking is a huge issue. I don't want to see it in my city. I understand what he says on the downtown or close to the five freeway, there is an inundation of, of massage parlors. But the fact is, I think that this has been written to cover the whole city, because I don't want it to be one part of the city, not the other. But, so there's a motion made. Is there a second? Second? Any further discussion? Okay, then we'll call for the vote.
And that motion passes unanimously?
Okay. Madam City Clerk, please read the title for item number 17.
Thank you, Mayor. The title of item number 17 is Community Services Commission's Stipend.
Mr. Mayor, tonight, we have a short introduction by our Assistant to the City Manager, Nidia Ruiz-Elles.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you tonight is a resolution that would update the stipend for the Community Services Commission. Currently, community services commissioners receive a $59 stipend per meeting. The proposed resolution would increase this meeting stipend from $59 per meeting to $118 per meeting. This would increase the stipend to match that of the Planning and the Traffic and Parking Commissions. Staff recommend adopting the proposed resolution in order to effectuate this change and ensure all commissions, commissioners receive the same stipend. Staff is happy to answer, answer or address any questions at this time. Thank you.
Was there any public speakers for this item?
There are none, Mayor.
Okay, bring back the council. Mayor Protem Piqueno.
I never realized that they were so underpaid. It's, and I don't know why, but I, I, I would love to, to move this, this item, that, yeah, they should, every one of our commissioners should be paid the same.
And there's a second? So there was a motion and a second? I think that was unaware, but all of us as council members, it's at the last budgetary meeting. All of our commissioners, no matter whether traffic or community service or Planning Commission, are all very valuable to us, and I think it's only right that they all get paid the same. So this is a great, great update. And there's a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. Thank you, Nadia. Great job.
And that motion passes unanimously?
Okay, that brings us to item number 18. Madam City Clerk, please read the item number 18 title.
Title of item number 18 is the Authorization to Partner with County of Orange on a Joint Request for Proposals for the Golf Course Property.
Madam City Ma, Madam City Manager, please introduce the item.
Tonight, we have a presentation by our Economic Development and Housing Manager, Adrian Gerhaba.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you for consideration is Authorization to Partner with the County of Orange on a Joint RFP for the Golf Course Property. In 1990, the county executed separate lease agreements for the golf course and the driving range properties. When the city incorporated in 1991, the county transferred ownership to the, of the golf course to the city while it retained ownership of the driving range property. The agreement with American Golf Corp. was amended in 2015 to extend the term of the lease by 10 years to coincide with the expiration of the county's lease for the driving range. The golf course is located near Murelins and Los Elisos Boulevards and has been operating for approximately 35 years, and the two properties present unique jurisdictional and operational overlap. The golf course sits on city property. It features a 25-acre nine-hole golf course and serves as a flood control overflow basin. There is no direct access to the parcel. The driving range, parking lot, and clubhouse and concession area sits on county flood control district property. It features a mix of artificial turf and natural grass bays and is required to follow the O.C. Flood Control Act and must adhere to flood control requirements. The parking lot serves both parcels and features over 130 parking spaces. The city and county's goal in this joint procurement is to find a proposer to creatively redesign the facilities and amenities in order to maximize the site's potential. The evaluation committee is made up of city, county, and staff from a third party. A primary proposal, a primary proposer will be submitted to the county board of supervisors for approval for both the city and county in order to enter into option and master lease negotiations. If the city or county are unable to reach an agreement with the primary proposer, the city and county may begin negotiations with an alternate. The slide contains a tentative timeline and is subject to change. So should the city council authorize the proposed joint procurement this evening? Staff anticipates the RFP would be released next month with responses due in November. Staff anticipates a selection would be made in early 2026. Conducting a joint procurement would allow the city to leverage the county's large network of vendors and coordination of a single user. And a single user is recommended due to the site's unique jurisdictional and operational overlap. At this time, staff recommends that the city council authorize a joint RFP for the Lake Forest Golf Course and Practice Center for long-term ground lease with the county of Orange, utilizing the county of Orange procurement process in lieu of the city's standard procurement process. Staff also recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents related to this action. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We do not.
I'll make a comment. This area is an underutilized portion of our, our city, and I'm excited about a proposal coming in from people that are eager. I'm sure there'll be eagerness to put something new there. So this is going to be good for the city, and I'm excited about it. So any other comments? Councilman Servo.
Thank you, Mayor. So I know the, the county's procurement process is more rigorous than our own, which I think is a positive. But just try to think about any kind of holes that might fall into. Is there any downside that you can think of, of going through this process using the, you know, the county and this joint access? I know we have a good relationship with the county. So I'm just trying to think ahead. Is there anything that we're blindsided or unaware that could be a potential negative that we need to mitigate?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Servo. Not at this time. As you mentioned, we have been working with the county on this for approaching a year now, and it's been a very collaborative effort. At this point in time, we have no, no reservation on anything like that.
Great, thank you.
I'll entertain motions. Mayor Protem Piqueno.
Yeah, sorry, Adrian, thank you. When the RFP goes out, as far as design goes, does the, does the city have any say on what, what we are expecting from them?
Yes, it's detailed in the scope of work. We just list a couple of desires and wants that both the county is looking for and what the city is looking for in terms of a potential redesign. And then it's up to the developers that are responding to this RFP to provide us with kind of what they would envision making changes to.
Okay, so I do have a recommendation. Because I walk by there every day, or every morning, or most every morning. There, the, the neighborhood behind, that's across, or adjacent to the back of the, or where the golf balls are off the driving range, they were getting pelted. And as I'm walking, I always see golf balls in the, the storm drain there, and they'll bounce, and then they'll end up on Geronimo. Just please have them raise the nets right there, right along the, the creek bed, because it's just, it's a matter of time before somebody ends up with a golf ball in their windshield. So that's just my little thing. Now move stack recommendation. Or did you?
I'll, Mayor Protem made the motion, and Benjamin, you made the second. I'm, I'm excited. This is an area of our city that needs to be renovated, and this gives us opportunity to have people come in and get creative with this property. Some of the golf courses in Orange County are going away. Irvine's talking about it right now. I think that this, this would enable us to have a short course here. And with the people that are now looking for an alternative to spending that many hours, I think that this would be a great opportunity. Maybe the last piece of puzzle right there, another piece of the puzzle for Lake Forest would be this. And so there's a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote.
And that motion passes unanimously?
And I think that... Okay, that brings us to the city manager's report. Madam City Manager.
I have nothing further this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Servo.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I think Lake Forest is known for its community engagement and that feel. I talked to other people from other cities who know about Lake Forest, who have come to live here. And so just a number of things that occurred recently. We had the concert in the park with the great band that was there on the 26th of, of July. And so that was a fun 80s, 90s night. And we got another concert coming up this Saturday, for those of you. So we've got actually two bands, I understand. Got the, the Garage Band, and then the Flashback Heart Attack. So 5:30 at the sports park, another great event. And then also had another fantastic band at the Taste of Lake Forest, The Trip. A lot of people enjoyed that. Wonderful weather, great food, got dining, dancing, and all sorts of good information in terms of the, the activities there. AYSO had their Meet the Coach Day at the sports park, AYSO had their Meet the Coach Day at the Sports Park, and people were telling me how much they appreciate the new turf and just the excitement of another soccer season coming up. So there were over 2,000 people that were there for that day, so a lot of good stuff for the kids getting ready to play soccer there as well. And then we also had two events for the fire awareness that one of our residents brought to our attention, and this is starting to get some real traction. So at Borrego Park, back on July the 19th, we had an event where we had Orange County Sheriff Department, Fire Authority, we had Southern California Edison and other interested people for that, along with the California Department of Insurance. We also had that same event in Borrego, to offer an opportunity for residents to come and get prepared, get awareness on this hot topic of the fire severity map that we're all aware of. So I have two consensus items that I'd like to bring to our attention for staff investigation. The first one, given the fire season is coming up, I'd like to see if we could actually have a presentation here by Southern California Edison, the things that they've done, because there's a lot of information that they've done in the recent months and weeks and years, along with the California Department of Insurance. Brenda, who came out, the latest one in Borrego, is willing to do that, so I'm wanting to see if I could get, first of all, consensus for a presentation on, you know, fire awareness with the fire season coming up and helping our residents be prepared for that.
I'll give it to you.
Okay? Thank you. And then the second item, let's see, I had it written down, but I forgot what it is. I'm going to hold that one until the next meeting. I'm sorry. So I'm all done. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Servo. Councilman Tedmer?
Thank you very much. Attended the Eagle Court of Honor for Troop 918. I think there were five?
Six.
Six of them there. So always great to attend Eagle Court of Honors. National Night Out was another wonderful event. Attended the El Toro Water District Community Advisory Committee Meeting. I attended the State of the County Meeting, which was presentations or brief comments by the Chair, Chair Chafee, Vice Chair Foley, Sheriff Barnes, and the CEO for the county all made some comments about their views on what's going on in the county. So attended that. And I also attended Taste of Lake Forest, great event. So thanks to staff and the chamber and all the volunteers that helped make that event happen. Thank you, Mayor.
Brings us to Councilman you.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing further.
Okay. Mayor Protem Piqueno?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank staff, especially our wonderful city attorney, went to UCLA. So thank you for, or thank you all. I went to the Taste of Lake Forest, I went to National Night Out, the Concerts in the Park, the Eagle Court of Honor, or Court of Honor, fire awareness things for Doug, the El Toro Water Advisory Board Meeting. And last Saturday, I went to Laguna Hills High School for the Saddleback Valley Pop Warner Opening Day. And the last year I coached, I think it was 2010, we had a team mom, who was the team mom for one of the teams that I coached with. She's now the president of the league. So Julie, great job in doing that. But I also wanted to give a shout out to the Saddleback Valley Pop Warner Nine U Blue Bears, and with one of their coaches, Cowboy Bohinsky and his two Bohinsky kids. And I actually donated some money to the Nine U Blue Bears Cheerleader Squad. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Council. I too attended the Taste of Lake Forest, and want to give a personal shout out and thank you to Councilman Tedmer for being there to help with the raffling at the end, because it went on and on and on. So I would not have been able to last without Councilman Tedmer, so thank you for your participation in the drawing of the tickets for the, what a great, great band, what a great venue we had at the Heritage Hill. It was a real, really fun night. I think that band just really lit the park up. And so I want to say thank you to staff for putting that together and fighting the trip. They did a great job in rocking us out that night. It was almost like a high school party there, so it was a lot of fun. Thank you to the Lake Forest Chamber of Commerce, who partnered with us, Supervisor Don Wagner, OC Parks were our partners for the Taste of Lake Forest 2025. I'd like to give a notice that we're having upcoming next month, September, CERTS, Certified Emergency Response Team. We're trying to get more people involved with CERTS. My vision is that maybe every neighborhood in Lake Forest would have a CERT member or two there, because there's people that are disabled, me, but I'm an able-bodied disabled, but there are senior citizens, widows, that need someone in the event of an earthquake or something, they just go check on them. And I think that our Certified Emergency Response Team are well-trained. They go through a whole training course, and I want to say that it's a pleasure to have all the community that comes out, whether it be the Fourth of July Parade, the CERTS, or some of our commissions. We have dedicated people who live in this city, and I think that Mayor Protem Piqueno says, you know, we love Lake Forest, we do love Lake Forest, and that's why we all serve up here, because we love Lake Forest. And so I want to say thank you to our staff, thank you to my fellow council members. I'm honored and blessed to serve with them all. I want to say God bless you all, and God bless Lake Forest and the United States of America. Thank you so much. Close this meeting.